One council member short, but we do have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and get started on time. It is June the 18th, 2019, 6:00 PM here at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Kim Erin with the Executive Director of Brazos Pregnancy Clinic to lead us in our invitation, followed by the pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge led by our councilperson, Trish Reiner. All rise please.
Praise you Lord God for this day that you've given us. May we remember David's words today and may we not walk in the counsel of the ungodly, nor stand in the way of the sinners, nor sit in the seat of the scornful. But trust in you, Lord God, meditate on your word, day and night. May this council and these people do so. May they continually seek your face, your word, to lead this town. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And now Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state
Once again, for the record, Councilman Tony Allen is not present right now at this time. At this time, we have a couple of presentations. Our first one being a presentation on programs available for aging and disability services through the North Central Texas Council of Government. This presentation will be given by Donnie Green, Director of Aging. Donnie?
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to join you all. I really enjoy coming to Granbury to talk about the services we have available through our agency. We don't have much of an advertising budget, so we tend to be a well-kept secret. And in fact, most of our local outreach is done by our dedicated members of our Regional Aging Advisory Committee, Trish Reiner and J.C. Campbell. So my gratitude to you all for representing the interests of not only city residents but county residents as well. So what I'd like to do is share a little bit of information about services through our agency. We are funded by your tax dollars, so we want to be accessible to your constituents. And I'm going to start by talking about services through our area agency on aging. And our mission through the area agency on aging is to plan and coordinate services for people who are at least 60 years of age, as well as family caregivers. And eligibility for our services is on the basis of age rather than income. We don't have income limits or cutoffs, but we do target older adults who are at risk of either poor health outcomes, premature nursing home placement, senior hunger due to issues including low income, requiring personal assistance, being isolated, as well as having limited family support. All of the services that we provide through our agency are offered at no charge to eligible people. However, we and our partners, including Hood County Committee on Aging, can accept contributions for our services. So here's a map of our service area. Dallas and Tarrant are shaded. They are the hole in our doughnut. Although the Council of Government serves a 16-county area, our area agency on aging does not serve Dallas or Tarrant, but it does serve Hood and the other 13 counties that surround Dallas and Tarrant counties. So there are a couple of ways that we provide services directly and through agreements with our sub-receipients and contractors, including Hood County Committee on Aging. The services that we provide on a direct basis include benefits counseling. We help people figure out Medicare and Medicaid and VA benefits. We have programs that help people who are coming out of the hospital nursing home, need some additional support in order to return safely to their homes. And then we also have a program that advocates for people who live in nursing facilities and assisted living facilities. We are proud to support Hood County Committee on Aging. Of all the programs that we offer, our home-delivered meal program is the largest in terms of budget footprint. Through our provider network, we serve over half a million home-delivered meals each year and more than 300,000 congregate meals. We also fund transportation services, again through Hood County Committee on Aging. We provide information about health and social service programs for older adults. We do a lot of training programs for family caregivers, for aging professionals. Other initiatives, we have a program that helps people who are in nursing homes return to the community, which is where most people would rather be. And at the same time, it's usually the most cost-effective setting to receive care. Nursing home care on average costs four times as much as care in the community for the same individual. We do a lot of health promotion programs, fall prevention, diabetes self-management, chronic pain self-management, which has been a hot topic recently with all the conversations about opioid abuse. And then we also have programs that educate and empower family caregivers to better care for themselves and at the same time, better caring for their older loved ones. Benefits counseling program. We have staff and volunteers who help people sort through public benefits. We help those who've been victims of scams, whether it's Medicare fraud, other consumer advocacy issues. We also have a little bit of funding that we can use to pay for consults with attorneys if folks need help drawing up trusts for nursing home Medicaid or drawing up wills, powers of attorney. We have case management programs that can do a number of things for those who qualify. We build a lot of wheelchair ramps, widen bathroom doorways, install grab bars. We help people out with temporary in-home services, buy the medical equipment that's not covered by insurance. And then we have a program that is temporary, available only through the end of August, that we can use to purchase air conditioners for folks who meet our screening criteria. We also have a little bit of funding that we can use to pay for up to two months' rent for folks who've gotten eviction notices, as well as keep the utilities on if folks have gotten shut-off notices. So we want to get the word out about that, and I brought some flyers about that program this evening. If I may, I'll leave those behind me and make them available to anyone who may be interested. We target folks who do have low incomes, who've been in hospital nursing home recently, who need help with their daily care, who are dealing with Alzheimer's or related dementias, as well as those who have limited family support. For the air conditioner utility and rent assistance program, folks have to meet three of our screening criteria, which appear on this flyer. For the rest of the services through our agency, they have to meet four of the screening criteria that you see listed. Similar program that works with family caregivers, does all of the things that our care coordination program does, also provides respite benefits as well as counseling. Many family members, despite giving it their all, are racked with guilt. They don't have time for themselves. And particularly when caring for somebody who has memory loss and personality change, it can be really difficult just understanding that the person I've been married to for 40, 50, 60 years is no longer the same person. We also have programs that support grandparents who are raising grandchildren. And in order to qualify for those programs, the grandparent has to be at least 55 years of age, have primary custody of grandchildren who are under the age of 18. Through that program, we can do all of the things I mentioned through the caregiver program. We can also help out with vouchers for summer camp, as well as help purchase back-to-school clothing and supplies. We have a long-term care ombudsman program that helps nursing home residents protect their residents' rights. We have staff and volunteers who will help them resolve issues regarding quality of care or quality of life at the facility. We do a lot of education and training for family caregivers. And one of the programs I would like to mention that we support through the Alzheimer's Association is a program called REACH. And this is a program that's available in only a few sites in the country. Through this program, the Alzheimer's Association will send out dementia care specialists to the caregiver's home, and it's a great resource for caregivers who are dealing with difficult behaviors. When somebody has Alzheimer's or related dementias, Lewy body, multi-infarct dementia, oftentimes, there are, usually there are personality changes, but sometimes there are challenging behaviors, whether it's somebody who's becoming paranoid, angry, violent. And the dementia care specialists can provide a lot of in-home education and support. They typically work with folks over the course of several months. They'll do a number of home visits and keep in touch by phone as well. And again, that's a program that is funded through our agency with support from the Alzheimer's Association and provided at no charge to those who qualify. Contact information for our agency, 1-800-272-3921. I brought some brochures. Again, if you know of somebody who's struggling with an aging issue, we'd love to be a resource. Here's my contact information. And then we also have a program that works with people of all ages who have disabilities. We work with young adults with disabilities, children with special needs. And through our Aging and Disability Resource Center, we connect folks with health and social service programs. So we explain eligibility criteria for the Medicaid program. We talk about Medicaid waivers. We talk about services through the local authorities, such as Pecan Valley Centers, and help people apply for benefits if they qualify. A couple of special programs through our Aging and Disability Resource Center. We do have a summer respite program, and we are able to help family caregivers who need a break and cannot afford to pay privately for somebody to care for their loved one. This program can be used in the home. It can be used to make arrangements at summer camp. And we've been partnering a lot with Stars and Strides Therapeutic Horseback Riding in Parker County. And a lot of folks we work with receive funding through our agency to attend one of those summer camps. We also have a program that helps nursing home residents who are returning to the community connect with federal, state, and local programs as well. We also provide a lot of information about affordable housing options. And the contact information for our Aging and Disability Resource Center is 1-855-937-2372. Brought some brochures for that program as well. The last thing I wanted to mention to you is that one of our responsibilities is to conduct a strategic plan for aging services. And we really want to be more inclusive in our approach. We've talked with members of our advisory committee, but we're really interested in hearing from people who don't know us from Adam, have never used our services, but may have some thoughts about what our agency or others in the community can do to better meet the needs of older residents. So during the next few months, we will be sending out surveys to professionals, to older adults, to family caregivers. And we'll also have a listening session. We'll have a public forum on Monday, July 15th. We will be at the Hood County Senior Center from 11:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. It's come and go. And I brought some flyers about that as well. So again, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all. The point I really want to drive home is that we're eager to be a resource for city, county residents, and particularly if somebody is needing long-term services and supports, that's really our bread and butter, whether it's the nutrition services, the transportation, the in-home services. We've got some funding through our agency that we can buy those services on a temporary basis, but our goal is to help connect people with all of the programs for which they qualify. So I'll go ahead and end my remarks there, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Don. Council, do you have any questions or concerns? Don? Thank you for what you do. That's a great program, and it sounds like we've got a couple of champions right here in Hood County, J.C. Campbell and Trish Reiner. So J.C., you want to add anything to that?
Yeah.
Jump on up there. Well, come on up. We may not know who you are.
The area agency on aging does a lot of things. She's just related to you. But the only problem is that you have to call them. They don't come out and find out if you need something. You call the numbers that she's put on the board or on these printed things. Then you can get help. But they don't know who needs help unless you tell them that you need help. So that's the key to this whole thing. We had the ADRC down here at one time until the funding ran out. And they could go there. It was on Pirate Drive, but it's no longer there. But you can call the number that's listed on this printed material, and then you can get all the help that you need, because they will do it. Thank you.
Thank you, J.C.
J.C., we'll hold you accountable.
And Don, if you leave all those brochures with our city secretary, we'll make sure that all the council gets them, and we'll distribute them just all over the place, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Allen is here, so we are all present now. Our next presentation will be given by Jordi Keith with the Texas Military Department to present their annual tribal consultation, a co-hosted event with TechDOT being held at the Lake Granbury Conference Center. This event's going to be held at the center on July the 29th through August the 1st. Jordi?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Jordi Keith, and me and my coworker Kristin Mountjoy are here from the Texas Army National Guard Headquarters at Camp Mayberry in Austin. And we are here to tell you a little bit about our upcoming tribal consultation. Federal statute requires the Texas Army National Guard to consult with Native American tribes whose origins are in present-day Texas. All of the guard's training areas are on land that Native tribes lived on, traveled through, or that hold tribal significance. The Texas National Guard teams up with TechDOT, who is also required to consult with tribes on land issues and land requirements. Normally, we hold our consultation in Austin, but last year, we chose Granbury, as it is closer for many of our tribes who travel in from Oklahoma, and it's also close to Fort Walter's, one of the guard's training areas. Because of the overwhelming positive feedback we received from attendees, we're happy to announce that this year, from July 29th through August 1st, Granbury will again host our tribal consultation. Yay!
All right.
We expect approximately 50 tribal members, as well as guests from several state and federal agencies. Last year, Mayor Hewlett spoke at our opening ceremonies and will do so again this year. And in addition, this year, we would love to show a partnership with Granbury by inviting city council members to attend multiple events throughout the week along with the mayor. This includes our welcome mixer at the Hilton Garden Inn, dinner at Grumps with entertainment provided by Mayor Hewlett.
Oh, no.
Uh-huh. And a dinner at Stumpy's. We're also inviting the city council to a special visit to Granbury Airport to view an Army National Guard Chinook helicopter and meet with the flight crew to learn about what the Texas National Guard does for Texas during natural disasters. While we know not every council member will be able to attend all events, our hope is that everyone will be able to join us at least one event to show their support for our tribal attendees and for your Texas National Guard. You will be receiving all the invitation details from your staff. Lastly, we want to say how much we enjoy working with the city of Granbury, and we're so excited to be coming back this year. Everybody we have worked with over the past year and a half has been so welcoming and helpful, from Kyle at the convention center to Mickey here at the city offices and Terry and Tammy at Visit Granbury, just to name a few. Thank you for your time this evening. We hope to see you all at our tribal consultation events, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Jordi. Do you have a schedule up there, or do you have one you can leave with our city secretary?
We will work on it. If we don't have one with us, we can get it to her tomorrow.
Or send it out on an email to someone so we can get it out to everybody?
Yes, and I believe a tentative hold has been put on everybody's calendars.
And I'll get that to Ms. Dooly, or we'll get it to Ms. Dooly out there.
Yes, we however don't have a song list for what you'll be performing, so.
He's already got that.
I got it.
I can assure you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into our consent agenda. We've got several items on the consent agenda. The first item being consider approving the city council meeting minutes of June 4th, 2019's regular meeting. The second item being consider authorizing the sale of surplus property through an online auction. I think we do this about every year. And our third one is to consider approving an amendment to the Engineering Service Agreement with McCord Engineering for the Management of Construction Phase of the Transmission and Distribution Power Line Relocation Project in support of the Granbury Regional Airport Expansion. Council, you've had an opportunity to look at these consent agenda items. Are there any items on there that you wish to remove from the consent agenda or to make alterations to?
Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. The first item being to consider adopting ordinance number 1943 to vacate an abandoned alley located between Lot 6 and Lot 2R on Block 1 of the Ull Edition located at 520 East Pearl Street. I'm going to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to give us a staff report on that, if you would, Chris.
We've done this in the past on neighboring property right next door, and I'll let Rick kind of fill you in on the details of this one.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor Hewlett, councilmembers, this is an ordinance to approve abandoning an alley located between Lot 6 and Lot 2R, Block 1 of the Ull Edition located at 520 East Pearl, also known as Granbury Flowers and Gifts, Vicky Nivens. The city no longer has need for this alley. It's clean of utilities. I believe Ms. Nivens owns property on both sides of it. It will need to be abandoned so it can move forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's going to be replatted and hopefully be back in front of you at next council meeting. Utility easement, of course, will be dedicated on this plat during that process. You can see in the financial consideration, Ms. Nivens has paid for this piece of public property. There's an exhibit located in your packet, spells it out. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I do believe Ms. Nivens is here. Yes, she is.
Yes, she is. So Ms. Nivens is here. Council, do you have any questions or concerns for Rick or Ms. Nivens? Thank you, Rick. Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve for the adoption of ordinance number 1943.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number five is consider executing an FIA agreement between RV Quality Concrete and City of Granbury, Texas in the total amount of $44,121.80 to allow for the construction and wastewater system improvements on Lilac Drive. Once again, I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on that to it, please. Looks like you've already got your guy up there.
Now, Rick, but this is outside our city limits in an area that we don't serve water to, but we do have the ability to serve sewer, CCN, in that area. And so they're building an apartment complex.
That's correct.
And we need to consider allowing them to tile into our city sewer, if that be your desire. Rick, I'll turn it over to you to color in those spaces.
Okay. Let's see if I can. I've got an area here. I hope I can get it to come up. There it is, right there. Okay. Yeah, this is in our ETJ. That intersection is 377 and James Road, right behind it. The yellow Carter Court, that is the city sewer main, and that has been there for some time. The applicant is asking for us to extend service along Lilac Drive to the south. That was the green. I believe there's three manholes. Staff has asked him to construct another manhole in James Road for us, and he's agreed to do just that. As Mr. Kaufman said, this is not in our city water CCN, but is in our wastewater CCN, therefore, so we can serve this. All inspection fees, testing fees, engineering fees have been paid. The payment and performance bonds have been put up by the developer. I went ahead and put some in the staff reports. You may be asking how we charge for this service when it's only sewer. Basically, what utility building will do, they will find a development of comparable size, and they will, as you can see, the commercial rates there on the per thousand gallons, and they will calculate that out. A good example of that would be the car wash down 377 that was here a couple of years ago that is also on our sewer. So that's how those are charged. Be happy to answer any questions. I do believe the applicant's representative is present, is engineer. If council has any questions for him as well.
I think our city manager has a question. Chris?
Rick, do you know how many apartment units there are?
I do not.
Let's ask the owner.
Gary, you don't know either?
I think we should charge the per-unit rate for the apartment for an outside residential unit.
Okay.
That's $83 or something for a unit.
Per units or per... It is really a pretty good charge when it's calculated up. The example that comes to my mind is the car wash that we had trouble with on the water well a few years back.
Well, hopefully, the car wash is using more water than this.
Exactly.
So I think that they would not need.
Where I was going after this is calculated, this sewer charge will be quite a bit.
Would be, yeah, if it's...
That structure is already up, right?
Yes.
The apartment complex already is? And I drove by there today. It's a single, one unit, right?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
Thanks, sir. Are they going to extend, as you said, where the green is or in the middle?
Right.
And put the three manholes in?
Yes, sir.
And they're pants for that?
Yes, sir.
What happens two years from now, somebody down the road says, "I want to tie in"? Do they have to reimburse him for anything?
No, sir.
To become a city?
Yes.
Okay.
Comes part of our city. They will have to put up a two-year maintenance bond at the completion of the project. Yes, sir.
How far off is our water from there?
It's back up in James Road and out on 377.
Where the yellow is there, Mr. Allen? It's where the yellow is on there.
Yeah. I'm just trying to visualize how far that is from there. It's too far for us to tie in.
Who's us?
Them.
They would need, we can't sell them water there in somebody else's water dish.
It's Aqua, Texas.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that part.
Matter of fact, they're pretty close to the water tower here.
I'm sorry. I missed that part.
Yeah, it's Aqua, Texas.
Okay.
But they need our sewer. Council, any more questions, Terrence or Craig?
So we really have no idea what the rate's going to be at 8371, but we don't know how many units there are.
It's great.
And yet, it's an existing, somebody said it's an existing building?
They just built it.
He just don't know how many there is.
Okay. What was asked the engineer? What is the capacity load, or what size pipe did you design it for? Mr. McKay?
Normally, you have...
Come here, Gary.
Got to get it on recording. We're a little frustrated we don't know what we're tying sewer up for. We need to count the capacity.
It's my understanding, and based on what I've seen, that there can probably around four units in that thing, because it would look that way. I don't know for certain. Normally, when we size the line at eight inches, we don't normally worry about, I mean, in this particular case, when we only have three services, that's way oversized, so it doesn't really enter into the actual calculations at that point. I'm not certain, again, how much, how many units there actually are. Like I said, we are going to be tying onto it. It's my understanding that originally, they wanted to get, they wanted to get septic from the county and couldn't because of the size of the lot, so they're kind of stuck with how they need to serve that facility.
So to the best of your knowledge... So to the best of your knowledge, it's maybe four units, not 24 units?
I don't think it's 24. No, it's not big enough to be 24 units, yeah. If you've been out there, I mean, it looks like a large house, basically.
It's two stories.
Two stories, yeah.
Is there any way you can call your client and find out?
Got a staircase in the middle, so it looks like there's probably about four units.
I'm sorry, say again.
It looks like there's about four units in there.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. There couldn't be any more than that.
Let me ask the question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Why do we carry how many units to this, so much per unit?
Capacity.
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 But he's saying it's gonna be designed, and the city's gonna...
An eight-inch is already built.
An eight-inch pipe is not a problem until it is.
Let me put this in perspective, if I could. The eight-inch line is laid on a half a percent slope, and the flow... The capacity of an eight-inch line is somewhere in the neighborhood of several hundred, a couple hundred gallons a minute. The normal use, or the normal flow from even 20 units of... Where even if there were 24 units out there, the normal flow would only be roughly, I would say, 30 or 40 gallons a minute, which could be handled even in a much smaller line. The eight-inch line is the minimum required by the city and is done that way in order to provide the capacities that are out there. It's not... It normally isn't something you worry about too much. I mean, we'll put an eight-inch... For example, we'll put an eight-inch sewer line in a subdivision with 100 units and easily be able to handle that. So it's really not... At this point, it's not an issue of capacity. If you add on to it later, then whoever adds on to it would... If they were gonna add like a thousand units or something like that, they would have an issue and have to replace it. But at this point, it's not something that you would normally... I mean, the size is much bigger than what's needed. It's kind of like killing a fly with a sledgehammer or a fly swatter. He's dead either way, so...
Was this lot, multiple lots planted, or what did they do to consolidate all those lots to where this apartment complex could be built?
That I'm not aware of. This was... This project basically was just entail building the sewer line and not any plating. There were no plating... There was no plating involved in it.
Do you know, Rick, if they replatted? Or they just go out there and build on three or four lots and do it, and now they're trying to get sewer? Technically, the law would require that they consolidate the lot lines to build on one city lot or one lot in the area. So I don't know how big the lot was.
It looks like...
I just think it's undone.
It does look like... I mean, I don't think it's three lots, if anything, maybe two. It's very... It's not very big. It's two stories, staircase in the middle. What happens if these people... There are houses around it, though, that they want to tie into that, Rick.
What about the fire code? Jim, did you have any input on the fire code? It's in the ETJ. Wholly within the ETJ, do they get fire code requirements met? I would guarantee you, no. And here we are with a built apartment complex in the ETJ of the city where people are gonna live that don't meet the fire code, and here we are gonna provide sewer to them. We really need to talk some more to these people.
Can you get them on the phone?
I'm sorry, say again?
Can you get them on the phone? I know how big this is, how many units is in it? Does it have a fire?
Yes, if you'll... If we can have a few minutes, I can do that real quick. Just bear with me, and I'll step outside and call you.
We're gonna entertain a motion to table this for a while, okay?
Okay, all right.
Can I get that motion? So we got a motion to table this for a later time, and by the way, sir, if you can get that information, we probably... We could maybe do it tonight, but without that, we'll probably table that another day. Okay? All right.
Second.
So we got a second to table this for a future date, future time. And any more discussion on this, counsel? All in favor, table, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. As approved, table that one at this time. Our next item, number six, is consider approving a professional engineering service agreement with the HAF Association Corporation based on their request for proposal to submit and propose to bid number 18-19-2 Granbury Parks Recreation Open Space Matter Plan 2020 update and adopt ordinance number 1944, amending the operating budget for the general fund for the fiscal year 2018-19 to fund this said project. Once again, I'm gonna call Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report. I think he's got some people to speak on.
I'd like to brag on Aaron and...
Please do.
Christie. They put together a request for qualifications with the scope of work to advertise, to solicit proposals from different engineering firms to help us come up with a new 10-year master park plan. I'll let him go over the details of that, but thank y'all for putting that together and getting it to this point. I would like to add that because we're moving forward to apply for the grant for the Acton Middle School walking path, this plan is important to be adopted before we submit that grant application in February. And so we were gonna do this in our budget coming up, but what we've done is we've parsed it into two projects, Part A and Part B, and we're funding Phase 1 of this out of the park dedicated fund. So go ahead and fill me in there.
All right, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Mr. Manager. I'd like to state also that I do have a representative from HAF in the audience if we have any detailed questions after my presentation. This is Kendall Howard. So currently, we're working off a 10-year-old plan, or it will be in 2010, master plan, and city staff and council refer to that plan a lot to see where we were headed, what we needed. We've met a lot of those desires, things that were brought to our attention 10 years ago, expanding the trail, the dog park, more open space areas. All those were identified in our first plan. So it's a great tool for council and staff alike to use, to develop. And we all know how much change we've seen in 10 years in the park system and the growth of our city. So in February, we put out bids for RFQs, and we did receive two back, and both of those were scored. And I will say that HAF scored higher on their proposal. They really drilled down and got back to us a custom presentation, took what we... The questions we had asked and answered those questions, and I believe a lot of that comes from the fact that they're the same organization that did our study 10 years ago. They had pictures of our city. They have, as you can see there, they have... Already have information to help speed this process along, we hope, and also help on So as Chris stated, we have broken down into two phases, and we are wanting to start as soon as possible to try to get ahead of the grant application. So you can see, there's project initiation, existing systems review, community visioning, and then a recreational facilities review. The $11,000 for the recreational facilities review was an option, but I'm proposing that we go ahead with that. You know, we've got new facilities now, and we've got open space. I think it's important to get some guidance on these facilities. Phase 2 would be Community Vision Part 2, Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan and Implementation. And you've got, I believe you've got the scope of work in your packet, and I won't hit on all these topics, but... And I wasn't really involved deeply with the first master plan. There was no city staff member at the time that was heading that up, that I was involved helping him out. So there's different tasks, and what I like, at the end of each task, there are deliverables that are identified, so we know at the end of each task what we should have accomplished throughout the plan. And there will be several meetings with city staff, meetings with council, meetings with Parks Board, possibly Cemetery Board, and then after each meeting, there would be... You'd come back with progress. And of course, ultimately, council would be voting to approve this master plan. Do you have any questions specifically or about any of the tasks with the master plan? And I want to point out also that there will be a survey formed, an online survey, a mailed-out survey, and one thing I noticed on our plan 10 years ago... I don't know what kind of online survey was done, but I noticed that a lot of the responses we got back were people of retirement age or older people, which I think our community in the past 10 years has changed a lot. We've got a lot of younger families coming in. We see our parks are busier, our adult recreations are busier, and men's league softball, coed softball, women's softball, basketball, volleyball, even dodgeball. So we've got a younger group of people that are active, and it's my desire to really reach out to that age group also and see what they want as far as change goes or improvements in the park system. Have any questions? I can try to answer, but if I can't answer them, I can certainly call on Kendall.
Thank you, Aaron. Counsel, do you have any questions for Aaron on this item? Here none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Professional Engineering Service Agreement with the HAF Association.
So moved.
Okay. I have that motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The second half of this would be to amend the ordinance... Adopt the ordinance number 1944, amending the operating budget for the general fund for the fiscal year 2018 to fund this said project. Do you have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner and a second by...
Second.
Councilman Corrigan. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Do you have the information you need, Mr. Sir? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to take this tabled item from the table.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Wadley and a second by Councilperson Reiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We will reconsider this one.
Okay, thanks very much.
Once again, we'll consider executing an FIA agreement between RV Quality Concrete and the City of Granbury, Texas. Sir?
Thank you very much. I was able to contact my client and got some actual good information for you concerning that piece of property. It sits on one lot that's roughly 100 by 120 foot in size. There are four units in it. One thing that probably needs to be brought up as well is that any house that we crossed or came in front of when we were building this, we're also putting in a tap there. So if those houses that are adjacent to that line want to connect to the line, they can do so. Although we're not making connections to those homes, we're just providing taps for them. Also, I did a real quick calculation for you with four units, assuming two and a half people per unit, or even three. The flow rate from that unit, from that apartment side is only about three gallons per minute. The capacity in the lines, somewhere around a couple hundred. So it's way oversized in that regard, but it's a typical size that most cities use for a minimum size. I can't really address how the building was built in terms of the fire codes and that sort of thing. It does stand to reason that those buildings would have to be built in accordance to county standards, and which I'm not certain, but I'm pretty sure the county probably adheres to the Southern Building Code or one of the building codes.
No, they don't.
They don't? Okay.
But I would like to ask Jim Cook some questions.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Mr. Cook, could you come to the lectern? As you know, Mr. Cook is our chief building official.
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions for him. Jim, it's a quadplex apartment complex. Based on no clearance or review from you, how do we know if it meets the fire code?
Without an inspection, we wouldn't know.
Okay. Is it required to have any kind of special construction or fire suppression system being a quadruplex unit?
Without inspecting it, you know, it'd be difficult to tell, but it would have to have at least fire separation between units.
The walls be firewalls, minimum?
Right.
And so we don't know if that's been accomplished. The reason I ask this is some apartments were built on Shady Grove that were outside the city limits within the ETJ on another water supply similar to this.
Right.
And we required them to extend sewer, I mean, city water and put in fire suppression into those apartments.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if we need to be the same... Meet the same code with this project as well before we agree to let them use our sewer?
It would depend on the date of construction?
They just built it. It's new.
If it's new, then it would have to have it.
Okay. So we... You know, I want to apologize to the council for me placing this on the agenda, but I would recommend we table it until the next meeting to where we can have our fire people inspect the construction methods to see if it meets the fire code and if a sprinkler system or whatever is necessary to ensure that's done before we let them tile into our utilities.
While I agree that that needs to be done from a legal standpoint, this is attorney here or whatever, does the city really have...
Speaking of the mic, sir, so we can hear you.
Okay. Since that's in the ETJ and the ordinances, other than plating, as I understand it, don't apply to that, so my question would be, is under what legal mechanism does the city have to enforce fire code other than saying, "We're not gonna serve you or not"?
Jim, why don't you go ahead and answer that?
Because I'm under the impression... I'm also under the impression that if you're in the CCN, you're pretty much gonna have to serve it at some point, correct?
Well, we have jurisdiction to 5,000 feet from the city limits for fire code.
Okay. I was not aware of that. I just needed to make sure that we were only up and up there, so, thank you.
Counsel, any more questions and concerns on this? Now, I'm gonna ask a question to, I guess, our city manager. So if we're creating... We're creating an additional CCN here, right? Is that what they're asking? Or we're tying into our CCN?
They're...
We're expanding ours.
We have a CCN in that area for sewer.
Right.
Not water.
But we don't have sewer there yet.
We have sewer partially there. Turn the picture back on, Rick.
Don't get frustrated, somebody.
No, I want y'all to see this, because this is important. We... If we move forward with this the way that we're doing it today, we're doing it inconsistently what we did on Shady Grove Lane with the apartments that we built there, the private enterprise built there.
It was just down the road, yeah.
We required them to extend the sewer water, I mean, the water even into... Because Aqua could not meet, or Monarch, whoever it was, could not meet the fire code, we had the builder put in the fire lines to fight fire in that CCN that we don't own just for those apartments, and that's what happened, so... And that's the way we did it, and that was before Rick got here.
So you want to be consistent with this?
I want to be consistent with what we did at Shady Grove.
Right.
I mean, that was logical. I mean, that was a logical path to move forward to allow something to be built in the ETJ that way.
We're not changing the rules or anything, right?
Right. If you do this, you've changed your policies.
Yeah.
On the fly.
Yes, sir. You're right.
We're being consistent.
Right.
That's, that answers my question.
And, and the duplexes that were built there as well have fire suppression.
Right.
You know, as well, that were-
On Shady Grove?
On Shady Grove.
I agree with the city manager, I think it should be tabled.
Right.
Till, till we can get our fire inspection done and make an assessment of what needs to be done to move forward.
So, Mr. Allen, you want to put that in the way of a motion?
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion to table this to a later date? To our next council meeting, which is July 2nd? Is that right?
Second.
Do we have that motion? We have a second by Councilman Mobley?
Sure. What day is it on?
July 2nd.
Second.
Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor of table it, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Sorry.
Let's see, here, 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 here. Bring this back down to item number seven, which is Consider Recommendations Regarding Repair or Removal of the Pedestrian Bridge at Shanley Park. Once again, I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman and give us a staff report on that. Looks like he's got a speaker ready to go.
You bet. I just want to say that we've got a failure, and Aaron's been working on this quite some time, and we came up with all kinds of ideas trying to save money. At the end of the day, I'll just let him tell you the analysis, but bottom line, it looks like it's cheaper to fix it than it is to tear it out and try to make that some kind of usable space. So, go ahead, sir.
All right, thank you. So the date on this bridge, I believe the records we have is back in 1994. That's the, the drawings that we have come across. So in August, we had TNP do a, a study on this bridge, because we had noticed it was, the east side abutment is, is failing, and that's probably due to the past years of flooding we have. If you see the, the abutments protrude out into the channel. Of course, the only way to, to resolve that issue is to install a longer bridge where it's, does not, the abutments do not protrude into the channel. So they did a study and had some estimated prices, several different options. I have got some quotes also from Alex Omega, that's a company that's currently installing, general contractor, it's installing the fencing on the, on the bridge and has done some other work for us. He's given us a price to go in and repair the bridge. He would, he's, to repaint the bridge, replace the decking, remove and replace the noncompliant handrails that currently exist on the bridge, remove the failing wall and replace that, and then also to install global fill to shore up that east side of the bridge. And that total is 123,358. To go in and just remove the bridge, and he wouldn't be using a crane, he would be just cutting the bridge up and removing it piece by piece and demolishing all the rock work you see there, and you would just simply have bare ground. That price would come in just a little over $49,000. And then we also had the idea, Chris and I were talking back and forth about if we took the bridge out, if we wanted to make some little scenic overlooks where the current landings are of the bridge, we have just some engineering prices alone for that come up to $131,000. That's no construction, that's just engineering aside. So it just gives you some, some options. It's, like I say, it's been, there is no current funding for, for any of this. We don't have any, any money set aside at this, at this point. Wanted to update you on the condition of the bridge and give you some options that we have been looking at.
I was wondering if maybe Oakley would like to raise money for us.
Yeah. Yeah. We could, Oakley Bridge, that's got a, that sounds like-
It's got a good ring to it.
Yeah.
So we really don't have any funds earmarked or located to fix this, but we've got it boarded up. We needed to bring it to your attention formally through the council and let you know that we are looking into it, trying to figure out what to do, but it looks like it's cheaper to fix it than it is to tear it down and rehab that area with something else, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Reiner?
Does this bridge have any historical significance? I know it was only built in 1994, but-
I don't, I don't believe it does, there.
I, I don't know that it does. You know, there's another newer bridge that spans the creek just, just down a little bit, so both bridges go to the same area.
Yeah, we've got three bridges across the creek there. It's, and, you know, with the newest one being the nicest one with the walking trail there, it gets most of the traffic, and this was probably one of the originals in the 90s, so, you know, maybe the beautification council could help us, you know, let's just start looking at some ways to raise money to, to get that. Maybe we could do a campaign for the citizens to add $5 to their water bill instead of 50 cents for this project for a limited amount of time. Maybe we need to come up with some ideas like that, so. We, it's really a matter of information to you, what's going on, because I believe one of you asked me why it was blocked off, and I thought, well, you know, it would make sense to explain it to everybody all at once and, and our process on it, so.
I would definitely fix it. No, I wouldn't do away with it.
Makes sense, so.
Make a motion to first four people in that end. Pay for it.
There you go. So counsel, any more questions for Aaron or Chris on this item?
Mayor, I, I do have one for Chris.
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
I'm joking now, but, you know, yesterday, we, we worked on the budget and all day. And I know at the end of the year, we always have extra money in our budget. So if we had a couple hundred thousand, like we should have bought police cars, maybe we could buy, pay for the bridge.
Well, that's, that's what we have to wait on to see if we have the surplus, you know, if we, if our revenue does exceed our expectations, we typically look at them, and that would be something we could look at for this as well.
I think, I think tonight, the staff is wanting to know what we want to do with it, so that they'll look at that number now and go forward and, and figure out how, when, and when, you know, how, how they're going to raise the money or how we're going to get the money and how, you know, and fixing it, so. That's what we're looking for tonight, right? Is just to-
Right, just general direction.
What we want to do with it.
Save the bridge or get rid of the bridge.
So I'll entertain a motion from any council member on all, on any three of these options here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilperson Reiner?
I would entertain a motion to save the bridge with the stipulation that we try to find some additional funding, perhaps, as Chris suggested, through one of our benefactors in town.
So we have a motion to repair the bridge.
Second.
With finding additional funding for it.
Yes.
And we have a second by Mr. Wadley. Pick on Wadley, too. So we have a motion to repair the bridge with looking for additional funding. And a second, any more discussion, counsel? No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Aaron.
That is approved, so we'll look forward to figuring out a way to raise the money to do it.
Is Aaron going to stay up here for the next item?
No.
How much more money that boy won't.
At this time, the city council will recess the regular council meeting, and we will convene into a meeting for the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust Meeting. The Granbury City Council now going to the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust Meeting. We will be considering approving the city employee's health insurance contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas. I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on this one.
Okay, let's keep it down, please. Thank you. We do have one more agenda item, folks. We're in a different thing here. We do solicit bids every year for our healthcare, for our benefits for our employees, and Blue Cross, Blue Shield, again, was successfully the low bidder, and this year, they've even cut our rates 2%, and we were able to build that into our budget projections. We do have Michael Parks with Higginbotham here to answer any questions you may have, but basically, it's the same policy, the same, everything is, is previous years, and we're saving money, so. We, what we need from the board tonight is to allow us to move forward to execute this contract to renew our insurance benefits with Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel, any questions on the, the contract?
What does that two percent mean, Mayor?
I can ask.
What, does the 2% save us?
Yeah, I mean, how much money is that total?
Can you answer that?
Ava, is it about $88,000, 2% savings?
Okay, folks, we just got over half our money.
No, we didn't. I already said, we took that into consideration when we built the budget. Don't be doing that to me.
You already spent that money? Come on, Chris.
We haven't even proved it yet.
I knew we weren't going to spend more than that.
Counsel, any more, any more discussion on the, the contract for the Blue Cross and Blue Shield? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the employee's health insurance contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Counsel, any more discussion with the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust Meeting? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust Meeting. I'll now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session that all the members are present, and the city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551-071, consultation with the attorney pending on contemplated litigation. Counsel will now go into executive session. The council has reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in executive session. Counsel, do you have any more discussion in the items?
Ready to talk.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. We will adjourn the meeting.